Okay. Good evening and welcome to the October 25th, 2021 Council meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by the City Council and staff via Zoom teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Yes, Mayor Kalmit.
Here.
Mayor Protem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Sistarsik.
Here.
Councilmember Masalabet.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Now, by motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anybody wish to pull a consent calendar item?
I'd like to call item I.
Item I, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, four supplemental communications were received. They've been emailed to the council members and made available to the public on the city's website.
Thank you. So I'll now call for motion and a second for the items not pulled.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the mover.
That was...
Verapapa.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So now could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Kalmit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Now, we're going to get a, have a legislative update from our Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen. And I'll now call upon Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen, please.
You're muted, Assemblywoman.
You're muted.
There you go, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, let's try that again. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. It's always very nice to be back home and a great honor to be before you tonight. As you know, I represent the cities of Fountain Valley, Los Almeitos, Seal Beach, Westminster, the unincorporated cities of Rossmore and Midway City, as well as Garden Grove and Huntington Beach. And as you know, I've previously served in this area as your state senator as well. I currently serve on the following committees in the California State Assembly. I'm Vice Chair of Revenue Taxation. I'm on Transportation, Water, Parks and Wildlife. For those who don't know, I have both the Chief Conservancy in my district, so water, parks and wildlife is very important for our district. I'm also on Banking and Finance. As far as select committees, I have eight select committees that I've been appointed to. The first one is Corporate Board and California Workforce Diversity Domestic Violence, Early Childhood Development, Emerging Technologies and Innovation, Food Systems, Master Plan for Higher Education in California, Orange County Homelessness and Mental Health Services, Uplifting Girls and Women of Color in California, and also Veteran Employment and Education, which are extremely important for my district, given that I have Seal Beach Naval Base and also the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Almeitos. I was also recently appointed to, on the Select Committee on the Orange County Oil Spill. Before I speak on what we have done in Sacramento this past year, I wanted to take an opportunity just to give you kind of a little update on the oil spill that just happened in Huntington Beach, which is south of Seal Beach, that have occurred in our district. The, I'm sorry? Do you have a question? The Orange County Healthcare Agency reporter, water closure in, actually, no, we're going to talk about these sewage spill first. There's a sewage spill a couple of weeks ago in Huntington Beach Harbor, which caused a closure. And two, so the Orange County Healthcare Agency reported water closure in Huntington Harbor, Beach Harbor area. Two samples were taken and both came back clean. So as of last Thursday, the harbor has not been opened. The Huntington Beach Oil Spill. This occurred a few weeks ago. And when I first heard about it, we immediately sent a letter to Governor Gavin Newsom, asking him to declare a state of emergency for the oil spill in Orange County. The following day, he was able to then declare the state of emergency. So we thank him for doing that. I also joined with Senator Pat Bates in sending a letter to the United States Office of Pipeline Safety requesting a full investigation. I also CC the government multiple state agency as well. Because the California Department of Justice has now conducted full investigation and my office and I are waiting for the results and details of that investigation that we can, so that we can best decide how to handle and to move forward legislation next year to make sure that this never happens again. Let's save solutions we have looked at into so far include tighter reporting regulations, locations of command centers where oil spills occur and pipeline inspections. Just so you know, the, the Command Center originally was placed in Long Beach, way away from Orange County, not even near where the oil spill was. And so we actually had to fight, we fought to actually get it moved to Orange County, which makes a lot more sense and also closer to the spill. And you know, just a few more updates on the oil spill. When we first heard about it, I went on an aerial tour and a ground tour briefing with the US Coast Guards in state parks. We've attended numerous Zoom meetings with state agency. I joined the United Unified Command Post, consisted of the US Coast Guard, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, many other federal, state and local agencies for briefing daily and also worked and, worked and, worked in looking at their volunteer response effort. And I want to say, for those who did sign up, we thank you because we had thousands and thousands of people, not just in Orange County, but across the state wanting to come in and help Orange County clean up the spill, the oil spill. And so we really appreciate your dedication and your willingness to volunteer and us clean bill. We also did a tour of Long Beach. As you can see on our beaches, we, these cargo ships are sitting idle. The tour itself gave me some glimpse on how long it takes for these ships to move. It, it, once a ship is allowed to move to the port, it takes almost 15 days for moving straight into the port and getting those cargoes, those containers off the ship. So we're talking about quite a while, there's well over 100 cargo ships out there at this point. So with all that, I have been recently appointed to the California State Assembly Select Committee on the Orange County Oil Spill. I've also was able to work with several nonprofits in Orange County and we were able to deliver 900 KN95 mask and also 500 elastometric mask to the CEO of both the Chief Conservancy. These resources were, are for the volunteers who are assisting with the cleanup efforts of the oil spill. Now going back to my legislative update. As you can see, it's been a very busy year for us trying to rebuild California and our communities after the COVID-19 pandemic. The 2021 legislative session has now ended. The legislative body have introduced a collectively, collective 2,776 bills and passed 983 bills to the governor's office. October 10th was the deadline the governor had to sign, approve, to sign, approve without signing or veto these bills. Governor Newsom signed 917 of those bills into law and vetoed 66 bills. I'm going to go into, a little deep into some of the bills that I think of would be of interest to you, the council members and the mayor, and also to the residents of Seal Beach. Businesses, COVID-19 pandemic absolutely devastated our community's businesses. As a small business owner, I know and understand firsthand how the pandemic shutdown has hurt businesses. It was my top priority coming back to the state to fight for our businesses, business owners and also reopening of the economy. So a couple of bills that we worked on and also assisted. AB 80, which allows eligible businesses to deduct business expenses that would pay for using forgiven Paycheck Protection Program or known as PPP, or the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, which is known as EIDL funds. Both of those were signed and chaptered into law. SB 887 appropriates $2.1 billion for the California Small Business COVID-19 Relief Grant Program for businesses in our community that struggled during the COVID-19 shutdown. That too was also chaptered. And in regards to kids and family, our families and children, as you know, have dealt with school shutdowns, distant learning, parents without work, and unable to put food on the table for their families and much more. As a working mom of two elementary school boys in our public schools, I understand that hardship. Fighting for our children is always my top priority. Throughout the last year, my colleagues and I have passed a lot of good legislation to help the families in our community. But before I talked about the legislation, I want to give a shout out to Los Almeitos Elementary School and also Lee Elementary School in the Los Almeito Unified School District for receiving the National Blue Ribbons. Two of the eight schools in Orange County, your school district, received the National Blue Ribbon. As you know, this achievement could not have happened without the students, but also the staff, teachers and especially our parents who go above and beyond for their children. Bills affecting our kids and families. AB 130 provides and funds universal TKH, child education for our four-year-years-old. Our state needs an early state childhood education system that can go beyond our youngest learners for success in kindergarten and beyond. Bill, the bill was chaptered and signed by the governor. SB 224 increases awareness of mental illness and how, and how to seek help by requiring that students receive an age-appropriate instruction at school that offer health education. This too was signed into law. SB 169 secures $500 million to support the Higher Education Student Housing Grant Program to construct more student housing. This was also signed into law. As you know, EDD had hundreds and hundreds of thousands of employees were forced into unemployment because of this business shutdown, which has devastated and inundated EDD, which is the Employment Development Department. It was revealed last year how inefficient EDD has, was ran, causing many to go without money to feed their families during a devastating unpredictable pandemic. Throughout the 2021 legislative session, we worked hard and passed many solutions to create a more efficient EDD for our communities, families and the unemployed. SB 753 allows that the California Workforce Development Board assess EDD wage data for purposes of evaluating program's effectiveness. That was signed into law. AB 110 requires EDD to cross-check claimant information with information by the California Department of Corrections and Rehab. Because as you know, over $30 billion of fraud, and a lot of these came from those in the prison who were receiving unemployment, while families in our communities who need that money were not given. So now EDD has to cross-check these names with the Department of Corrections to make it sure that there's no more continuous fraud. AB 12 protects applicant's privacy by requiring that EDD stop sending outgoing US mail to any individual that contains their individual's social security number. All three of those bills were signed into law. In our office alone, EDD, we have received over 2,000 cases in the last several months. During this time, EDD has been so overrun that my district staff has had to do a good portion of the work to help the people in our district to get the benefits they need. If you know of anyone who is having difficulty with EDD till this day, please do not hesitate to contact our office. We will try to do our best to help and assist in hopes of resolving the case. Public safety and criminal justice reform is always so important for the success of our community and businesses. While I support a number of good bills, more important, I also voice opposition toward irresponsible bills that would compromise the safety of the businesses and families in California. One bill that I supported, that I believe is important for you to know, AB 57, which expands training on hate crimes that have risen significant in our neighborhoods during the pandemic and review of law enforcement policies related to hate crime. There's a few bills that I believe is very negative and very impactful to our communities that I wanted to bring to your attention. AB 333 significantly weakens anti-gain laws and removes loitering and felony vandalism, felony theft of an access card, counterfeiting, identity theft or wrongfully using DMV information from the list of offenses that demonstrate pattern of criminal gain. This was signed into law. Two other bills, one was chaptered and one was vetoed. The first bill that was vetoed, SB 357, removes penalty for prostitution-related crime by repealing the existing crime. Basically, it would have made prostitution, prostitution legal in California. The good news is the governor vetoed the bill. Another bill that I think something that we as parents need to look and really make sure that we pay attention to our children. This bill was chaptered and is now going to become law. It allows that any juvenile offenders who sell drugs and older juvenile who commit felonies to avoid formal terms and condition of probation, which basically means that we're allowing minors to now be able to sell drugs, not just in school, but anywhere, which means that drug dealers are going to now look for a way to start recruiting our children to start selling drugs in school and beyond. So I hope that all the parents who are listening to this, please take a note of that. That will become law next year. And when it does, have those conversations with your children and making sure that they don't become victims of these drug dealers. Veterans issue, as a member of a military family, taking care of our country's veterans in armed forces is extremely important to me. These men and women have risked everything to protect our freedoms and democracy. Several of the bills that were signed into law, two bills that were signed to law and one that was vetoed that I find should, would be important since we've got Seal Beach Naval Base in our district or in Seal Beach. AB 107 requires all department consumer affairs boards to provide 12-month temporary licenses to military spouses who provide documentation that they are duly licensed in another state and who pass a background check. This enables them the ability to quickly resume their chosen profession when they relocate to California. This bill, actually, I was working on this when I was in the state senate. And so I'm so excited that a few years later, we are now seeing this and now this will be allowed. SB 667 authorizes explicitly the administrative executor or personal legal representative of a veteran's estate to file a claim on behalf of the veteran for the disabled veteran's property tax exempt, even if they cannot personally file the claim themselves. One bill that the governor vetoed was SB 665, which authorizes private employers to establish a rent veterans preference employment policy to be applied uniformly to hiring decisions. That was vetoed by the governor. Overall, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My district staff and I've always been here in the community, attending events, supporting local businesses. We recognize several small businesses in our district every month on our social media platforms and attend lots of grand openings as well. Please let us know of any upcoming events or grand openings. And that, you know, we've been in communication with the city and I appreciate the city being able to assist us on that and also with some of the community's organization in Seal Beach as well. I appreciate your trust as I represent you and the community in Sacramento. During the next few months, our staff in Sacramento are working on bill ideas and suggestions for next year's legislative package. So I would love to hear from you. I would highly encourage it and would appreciate any feedback or any new ideas for a bill. Feel free to contact our office, whether it's the district office or our Sacramento office. Again, Mayor and Councilmember, thank you for allowing me to be here and thank you for giving me the opportunity to give our annual Sacramento update.
Thank you very much, Assemblywoman Janet Nguyen. We appreciate it very much and hope to see you again next year.
Thank you.
All right. We're now going to have an update from Southern California Edison. And so could we have the Southern California Edison Government Relations Manager, Armando de la Libertad, come and speak to us?
Yes. Good evening, thank you. And thank you, Assemblymember, for your representation of the area. We appreciate your hard work. It's wonderful to see you.
Thank you.
Let's hear, I, I have a, a number of slides that I can present. However, I'm just going to, for the sake of brevity, I'm going to reference just a handful of them, perhaps the first four or five. But good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm your Southern California Edison Government Relations Manager for the area and look forward to continuing to work with the city and this council during the weeks and months ahead. Today, I'm here to, or this evening, rather, I'm here to share some information about the upcoming time of use, what's called the time of use rate transition that's affecting many residents, residential customers in Seal Beach and really throughout Southern California. In short, time of use rates, and I will refer to them as TOU, time of use, time of use rates can help give customers more control over their energy costs while also helping transition to a clean energy future. That is, time of use, TOU, can help customers save money and live greener, so to speak. I'll share a bit about the choices that customers have during this transition and some tools available to help. Slide two, please. Customers have choices, even though we are transitioning, most customers, they can opt out of this time of use rate, TOU, at any time. Even after customers are transitioned, they can switch back to the usual tiered rate system that all of us are familiar with today. TOU rates do not result in increased revenue or profits for Southern California Edison. These rates are designed to be revenue neutral. Some customers actually benefit from switching to TOU rates without any lifestyle changes whatsoever. The vast majority of customers will pay a similar amount on this new TOU system. Actually, it's, it's not new, but it's new to some residents with their current energy usage and can save if they choose to act, take action to shift usage. Customers that stay on eligible TOU rates, on ineligible TOU rates will be given a year of bill protection as an incentive to try it out. Lastly, there's an extensive marketing effort throughout the service territory here in Southern California and statewide to explain this TOU rate structure. So, so what is it? For those that aren't, have not really studied it up until this point, it's, you know, the, the usual rate plan, it's a tiered rate plan that most residential customers are currently on. It charges based on how much electricity you use in your, in your home. Once you get to a more expensive tier, you're stuck there until the next billing cycle. But time of use rates charge both on when you use electricity and how much you use. The rates for each time period are more closely aligned to the actual market price for electricity. And, and essentially what's important to understand or to, to share with residents is that the most expensive time to use electricity is between 4:00 and 9:00 PM, especially Monday through Friday weekdays in the summer. And so, you know, what, what is this TOU proposal all about? Where, where does this come from? Well, state policy requires investor-owned utilities like Southern California Edison to transition most residential customers to a time of use rate plan. And the intention behind this is to help with the state's environmental goals. During the middle of the day, providing power is both less expensive and better for the environment due to the abundance of solar energy on the grid. A time of use rates help by providing a financial incentive incentive for customers, for residents, to shift their usage of electricity from when there is a strain on the grid to when power is more readily available, which happens to coincide with when the grid, when the grid is, is the cleanest, when renewable energy is being used most. The timeline for this is in November and I actually forgot to mention here, I'm on slide five, actually. And we could, you could probably skip forward to slide 13. And we can stay there for a bit. Customers have been provided with a, a rate analysis to help them make a choice to either stick with the transition to time of use or stay on their tiered rate plan, or even transition to another time of use rate. There are extensive communications that have been shared with customers 90 days in advance of this transition. And Southern California Edison has a, a dedicated website for customers who are transitioning. It's full of all of the information that customers need to make an informed decision on, on the selection of a time of use rate. There's also there a rate comparison tool, so rates can be compared to help educate the, the customer on, on the choice that they have in front of them. And as I mentioned on, at the onset, there's a, there is bill protection. And so at the end of a 12-month period, if the customer would have paid less on the current, but what will be the old tiered rate, Southern California Edison will provide a bill credit for the difference. Again, time of use rates are designed to be revenue neutral. And as you can see on the, on the slide, there are three ways in which customers can take action on this, this transition. One, the, the customer or the resident can return a business reply card to Southern California Edison to, to select the, the rate that works best for the household. There's also a website that you see there, which is se.com/TOUtransition. And there is also a dedicated 800 number to connect the customer to the appropriate individual at Southern California Edison. Finally, there are various tools and programs to help customers maximize use of time of use. Use of time of use. Shifting, when you use major appliances, for example, like dishwashers, air conditioners and washing machines can help customers save money. A household doesn't have to stop using energy during what's, what's referred to as on-peak periods, but shifting major appliance, use of major appliances during, throughout the day can have a big impact. And SE has tools and incentives that can help make this easier. I know time is short, but I'm now able to respond to any questions the council might have or collect any questions tonight or, you know, offline to provide responses to clarify anything around time of use that I presented tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Armando. Are there any questions from council?
Yes, Mayor Kalmit, I had a quick question. This is Councilmember Verapapa.
Sure.
Could you tell me briefly how the TOU would affect solar users, owners?
Yes, you know, so the time of use rate that is used as the default for any individual customer, any individual household will be based on what saves the most money for that, that residential customer. And so the, there, you know, there are several... the, there, you know, there are several time of use rates available, including one that, that tends to be beneficial to those residents that have have various tools at their disposal, like, like solar or battery storage or other distributed energy resources. And, and so the, the best thing I can advise the, the customer is to once it's clear which time of use rate is, is the default rate, compare that rate to the others that, that are offered and, and confirm that indeed usage patterns are most beneficial using the default rate. So, I mean, that's, it really doesn't affect solar users, users. What's important is the, the default rate that is selected in the process.
Okay.
I, I also had a, I also had a question, Mayor.
Sure, go ahead, council members.
I wanted to thank Armando for, for giving this presentation tonight. I, I, I found this a little confusing myself when I was reading it, so I appreciate him coming on. The originally, I think it's, I gave today as a deadline for me, so I'm not sure how many residents were supposed to respond by today. Do you know how many, like a percentage of people, has it been large that responds so far or, or, or small? Because I'm not sure everyone is aware of this change.
Yes, to be honest, I don't know what, what, what the response rate looks like at this point. You know, it is a, a kind of a default transition process that occurs throughout Orange County in November. Other counties have other transition months, but in Orange County, it's in November. So whenever that residents get, receive their bill in, in, in November, their, their new billing cycle, let's say it's November fifteenth, that's when the, when, when, when it would, it would start, it would begin. But, you know, one important point to keep in mind is that the, the residents can, the customer can opt out at any time. So if it doesn't work for that customer, then, you know, a month in, six months in, there's an opportunity to, to switch. And then after a twelve-month period, there would also be an opportunity to, to recoup if it's not the, you know, to receive a bill credit if it's not the most financially beneficial rate offering.
Okay, and they have the ability to switch one time in twelve-month period or is it two times in a twelve-month period?
My understanding is that it would be once every twelve months.
Twelve months, okay. I did read over the weekend, I was on Nextdoor and there was a thread on this and there were like three hundred and fifty comments. So I, I know that there's, there are questions that people have, but I think one of the issues they had is that it was a, in, it wasn't an opt-in, it was an, you had to opt out to stay on your present plan. So there may be, there may still be confusion going forward, but thank you. I appreciate you coming on and, and helping to explain some of the rationale behind this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess I had a few questions.
Sure, Tom, go ahead.
You've mentioned that customers would, if they don't opt out, they'd automatically be switched to a plan that's based on what saves the most money for that customer. Is that correct?
That's correct, based on the previous twelve months of electricity usage.
Okay, and there's some formula that determines, you know, that that's the best rate for that particular customer?
Yes, ba- based on the, the actual, you know, usage, so the actual previous bills over the last twelve months using the, you know, the, the formulas of the specific time of use offerings.
Okay, and what about people with electric? I know I, I opted for this other plan where you can specify certain times to charge your car, electric car. Like after ten P M, it's, it's less expensive. How is that affected?
Yes, I, I'm not sure I have the specific response to that question. There are other, there are some exceptions to time of use, for example, for customers that have medical, medical, what are called medical baseline customers that have, let's say, medical equipment that is life sustaining. But there is a time of use option, I believe it's called PRIME, please don't quote me on that, I'd have to look it up, but there is an option that would, i- is more likely to benefit customers that, for example, have an electric vehicle or use a, an electric vehicle charging station at home. But whatever plan is the most beneficial of the time of use options, that would be the one that would be assigned to the, to the resident for, you know, a default transition during the November process.
Okay, well, the, I guess what my question would be is if the formula is smart enough to realize that people are charging things during off-hours now to try to save money, well, that, is that factored into the calculations?
There. That's a good question. There is a slide. I don't know which number it is offhand, that, that shows what the actual rates are for different times of the day. So it's really as, as, you know, straightforward as that, different times of the day have specific rates of, also depending on basically the season. So the rates change, you know, between winter and summer, for example. And so if the usage patterns of the household are anticipated to be consistent with the last twelve months, then the default rate would be, you know, the, the correct one. Now, if patterns, if usage patterns have changed in the last, you know, six months, let's say, there, there would be a, an opportunity to use the comparison tool to, to determine whether or not there, there might be another rate structure that would be, that would be most beneficial. And the, you know, some of those tools, like the rate comparison tool, are available online. Also, the eight hundred number that I mentioned, and that would be a, a, a way to have a conversation with someone to try to figure out the, you know, the best, based on the individual circumstances of that household, what would be the best match?
Okay, yeah, I was on the website just now and I clicked the billed usage per TOU and I got an error, you know, just so to let you know. But, okay, oh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, any other questions? All right then, Armando, thank you again for attending our meeting and giving us a lot of good information, even though it raised a lot of questions, I think it'll ultimately sort itself out.
Thank you. And I want to be accessible, so I appreciate your time and welcome additional questions, you know, offline via email by phone as well. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we have one additional presentation from our Public Works Director Steve Meider regarding the Construction Management Association of American, of America Project Recognition Awards. So, Steve.
Thank you, uh, thank you all, Mayor, members of the council. I thought I would start with some background. Every year, the Construction Management Association of America holds an award ceremony to recognize infrastructure project achievements constructed the previous year. Upon completion of the Seal Beach Pier Reconstruction Project back on May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, the project team thought the project would have a relatively good chance of receiving this recognition award, given the overall uniqueness of the project and its successful delivery. In fact, that year, we did receive notice that the project had been selected for a recognition award, but given the circumstances, the event would have to be postponed and combined with the two thousand and twenty-one event. So here we are now, receiving this award two years later. So first, so first I'd like to recognize our consultant management team, Steve Much and Jason Reckler, both with the management firm of Answer Advisory, which the city retained for construction management services. Together, they did, not only did they do an excellent job overseeing the day-to-day construction activities, but also in staying ahead of the contractor to ensure the project would stay on budget and on schedule throughout the construction phase. More importantly, I would like to recognize Dave Spitz, the overall city's project manager for the Pier Reconstruction Project. Starting the day of the pier fire on May twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, David did an outstanding job leading the pier reconstruction efforts through a very difficult and lengthy environmental permitting phase, a complex design phase, in the construction phase with a relatively tight schedule. All of this while staying in very close coordination with the insurance company to ensure the city would receive maximum project reimbursement. In the end, the pier reconstruction project was delivered slightly under budget of, of the overall budget and on schedule, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, approximately three years after the pier fire. So again, I truly believe Davis to be commended for his efforts and dedication to ensuring the successful delivery of this project. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I especially like the curved planks on the pier. Okay, it's now time for public communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding the items on this city council agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to provide comment were asked to send comments via email to the city clerk or via the comment icon on the city's website before five thirty today. Comments provided via email by five thirty today were distributed to the council and posted on the city website for review by the public. Email comments received after that time will be posted on the city's website and forwarded to the city council after the meeting. Any documents for review should be sent to the city clerk prior to the meeting or distribution. Pardon me. Those members of the public wishing to call in can join the Zoom meeting from any electronic device by clicking the following link, zinezoom.us/j/82326535852 or may also call in by dialing one six nine, six six nine, nine hundred, ninety-one, twenty-eight, double pound sign. Those members requesting to speak by phone or on Zoom can unmute by entering star six when called upon to speak. Once in the meeting, you'll be added to the waiting room until the public comment period begins. At that time, the commentator will be allowed to join the meeting and offer their comments. Commenters will be allotted five minutes to address the council. The ability to comment will be disabled when your allotted time has expired. So, city clerk, do we have any emailed comments or anyone on the call that wishes to address the council?
No, Mayor, no email comments, and there aren't anyone on the call to address the council.
Thank you. And we have our city attorney report, City Attorney Steele.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Excuse me, we have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. City managers report. City Manager Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items tonight, and both of them are actually related. First, you have an item, as you know, on your consent calendar tonight to approve an employment agreement for our new community development director, Alexis Smidl. As is customary with executive management vacancies, the city facilitated a very extensive recruitment process. And I'm proud to say with the assistance with Les Johnson, as well as Barry Curtis, assisting in recruitment outreach efforts to ensure that we had a very well-experienced and well-qualified candidate pool, especially considering the public sector market for community development directors right now is very competitive. I'm very excited to announce the appointment of Alexis Smidl as our new community development director. And Alexis, Alexis is also on Zoom with us tonight as well. Alexis brings over sixteen years of community development experience and is currently the community development director for the city of Westminster. She oversees a staff of over thirty employees and day-to-day operations of the planning, building, grants, housing, and community preservation divisions. She's currently managing the development of a specific plan for the Hundred Acre Westminster Mall and has a strong background in economic development efforts and building positive working relationships with business owners, the community, council members, planning commissioners, and her staff. Alexis previously served as the Economic Development Manager for the city of Westminster and prior to her tenure in Westminster, served as a senior associate and principal for RSG Incorporated, which focused on redevelopment consulting and is now dedicated to real estate, economic development, fiscal analysis, and affordable housing. And I know all of you will respect and appreciate that Alexis is extremely passionate about local government and providing the highest level of customer service to residents and businesses in the communities that she serves. Alexis has a master's degree in urban and regional planning from U C Irvine and a bachelor's degree in geography and regional development from the University of Arizona. We're so fortunate to have recruited Alexis to the city of Seal Beach. She's a well-respected and experienced community development director and public sector professional. Please join me in welcoming Alexis to the city of Seal Beach and the executive manag- management team. And we really look forward to her first day with us on Monday, November fifteenth. So at this time, I would like to introduce Alexis Smidl to you as our new community development director, and she would like to say a few words as well. Alexis?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and thank you very much, Jill, for the really nice introduction. I am very excited to be here with you this evening. I'm really looking forward to getting to know all of you a little bit better and, and building relationships with you and the community. Seal Beach is just, it's, it's just a lovely city, and I'm really so honored to be asked to serve here. Again, I'm looking forward to, to meeting all of you, to getting to know everyone a little bit better and to years of good work with, with the council and with the city manager and the excellent staff team that I've been getting to meet here and there as, as the weeks have progressed through the interview process. And of course, with the residents and the businesses of Seal Beach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alexa, very much. Second, tonight, having introduced Alexa now as our, our new community development director, although Barry Curtis will remain on staff with the city through November twelfth, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to personally thank our interim community development director Barry Curtis for his dedicated service and leadership to our community for the past nine months. Barry served as our contract senior planner for five months prior to his appointment as interim community development director in early July, following the retirement of Les Johnson. As many of you may know, Barry started his public sector career in Seal Beach many, many years ago as, as a lifeguard prior to transitioning to a very successful career in planning. So for him, in so many ways, he was able to come back to the city he still calls home after over twenty-five years to help us continue to move forward with many projects and day-to-day oversight of planning, building, and code enforcement until we had successfully completed a recruitment for a permanent community development director. Barry's dedication to the council, to our executive team, to his staff team, to our community, to our businesses, and to our organization, especially his leadership with the housing element, local coastal program, development services, fee study and cost allocation plan, and several planning projects is really to be commended. Barry, I know I speak on behalf of the council and executive team as well, when I thank you for your dedicated service and leadership to our community. Again, after over twenty-five years, it's really been an honor and privilege to work with you. So at this time, I'd like to give Barry an opportunity to say a few words as well. Barry?
Uh, thank you, City Manager Ingram. Mayor Komic and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to say a couple of words. I wanted to start off by thanking Jill and Patrick for providing me with the opportunity to, to serve you and the citizens of Seal Beach for the past several months. It's really been a pleasure for me to return to Seal Beach after, as Jill indicated, almost twenty-five years away. As you know, Seal Beach is a special place. It's one that deserves and it's lucky to have the best elected officials and professional staff. It's been my pleasure to work with each of you. It's been equally rewarding for me to work with and foster professional relationships with the city's superb executive management team and to make some new friends. My short tenure has also allowed me the rare opportunity to reconnect with many old friends around town. While I'm While I'm saddened to be leaving you, I really couldn't be more excited by the city manager's selection of Alexis Smidl as the new community development director. I think she's a great planner, a great leader, and a great person. I think Alexa will, will be the perfect leader to meld and continue to grow a young and talented community development and community services department. In short, I just want to say congratulations. I think it was a great hire. And finally, my wife and I live right on the other side of the base, and Seal Beach is our closest town to Dine and Recreate. So I hope I'm not saying goodbye, but rather I look forward to seeing you around town soon. Thanks again for everything.
Thank you, Barry. That concludes my comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Now time for council comments. General council member comments and reporting pursuant to AB 1234. So we'll start with Councilmember Moore.
I have no comment tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Sistarsik.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank all of the candidates who applied for the Historical Resources Commission at tonight's meeting. I think Seal Beach is very lucky to have such a very talented and energetic group of citizens who are willing to help us step up and help us get going on this endeavor. And I, I just thank them very much for all their volunteer and their, their well wishes for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera Papa.
Yes, thank you. Nothing to report tonight, but I just wanted to thank Barry for his services as interim director. I really appreciate the hard work he put in during that time, and I did want to welcome Alexa to the team. Looking forward to meeting her. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And for myself, I also would echo the words of the previous comments, both on the quality of the candidates for our historical group, and also to thank Barry. We have had a good time with Barry here. He helped us in so many ways that you can't believe. And welcome Alexa to our team here as well. Okay, let's see. Next is the consent calendar. We have no council items, by the way, tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You forgot me.
Oh, how do you know? I mean, Councilmember Masalavich. Sorry.
I just wanted to report that I have nothing to report, but I'd like to say thank you to Barry. It's been great having him here and catching up on the old days. And Alexa, welcome. It's gonna be great working with you as well. I'm looking forward to it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, and with apologies. Now, there are no council items, and now we move to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. So could I have a motion and a second for the consent calendar items with the exception of item I?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Kamik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavich, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Now we will move on to items removed from the consent calendar. This will be item I, approving the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Solid Waste Handling Services. City managers or staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I will turn this item over to Assistant City Manager Patrick Gallegos, since he has been leading this effort for a few years now, and will also note that Patrick has representatives from both Republic Services as well as HFNH on the Zoom call with us tonight as well. Patrick?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we ask that the city council consider approving the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Solid Waste Handling Services. As mentioned by the city manager joining me this evening, to answer any questions you may have are Manny Govea, the area municipal manager from Republic Services, and Senior Associate Haley Coonert with HFNH, the city's solid waste and recycling consultant. As, as you may recall, in 2014, the California State Legislature established a new unfunded mandate. And I stress that unfunded mandate, and this is for all jurisdictions in California, to implement a mandatory organics recycling program through Assembly Bill 1826, which would reduce the amount of food and other organic waste being deposited into local landfills. While AB 1826 places the burden on local jurisdictions to provide an organic waste recycling program, Republic Services, the city's franchise waste hauler, is proposing a fully compliant AB 1826 program for the city of Seal Beach that will divert organic materials from landfills to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. To assist the city with negotiating AB 1826 program rates, the city entered into a professional services agreement with HFNH November of 2020. The negotiations between the city and Republic were completed, and now staff is recommending a Second Amendment to the existing franchise agreement. The 1826 program proposed by Republic will offer organic waste recycling service to all customers that are enrolled in the program. Businesses who generate more than two cubic yards of solid waste per week would be subject to the 1826 program. Those meeting the threshold would need to pay one of the monthly rates listed in the amendment, and that rate is based on the size of the container and the collection frequency. If a business does not enroll the 1826 program, then they will not see a rate increase at this time. Part of the 1826 program requires public education and outreach, which Republic will perform. The cost of this portion of the program is about $30,000 per year. As we all know, the business community has been hit especially hard during the pandemic, and the city understands the challenges these types of unfunded mandates continue to have on businesses. And as such, we are recommending that the city utilize non-departmental funds and act implementation fee funds to cover the cost of the outreach portion from the effective date of this amendment to June 30th, 2023. Beginning July 1st, 2023, a one-time sector-wide increase of 1.7% will be applied to the commercial industrial customer rates to fund the outreach program. The 1.7% increase amounts, on average, to the businesses to about $2.99 per month. The city has in the past utilized act implementation fee funds for technical assistance for solid waste and recycling, recycling outreach and giveaways to residents, free sweeping services, and for offsetting certain staff salaries whose jobs are associated with assisting the city's goal of diverting solid waste from landfills. Without the adoption of an organics recycling program, the city may be perceived as not making a good faith effort to comply with the law, potentially exposing the city to fines for non-compliance. If the council adopts the proposed Second Amendment, staff will return to introduce, to introduce an ordinance amending the pertinent sections of the city's municipal code to add a mandatory commercial solid waste and organic waste recycling requirement for certain businesses and multifamily residential dwellings consistent and in compliance with state law. This will further the city's requirements to enforce recycling measures and meet the state's goals. Again, I have Manny Govea from Republic Services and Haley Coonert with HFNH to answer any questions, and with that, we'd be happy to answer your questions.
Right. Let's have any questions from the council. We'll start with Councilmember Masalavich.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, who pulled the item.
Thank you, Mayor. What? In the, in the staff report, it says that Republic will look at the businesses that are generating the organic waste, but they will not be required to, how, how is that gonna work where they do have cute waste, but they don't sign up for some reason? How does that work?
Well, you know, since I have Mr. Govea on the, on the Zoom link, I'll, I'll have him chime in and give his expert response to that question. Manny?
Good evening, Councilmember Moore. So if a business is unwilling to sign up for the program, but they do meet the thresholds of needing an organics program, that would be something that would be included in our required quarterly reporting in the amendment that we would then turn back over to the city, let them know who the business is, any reasons for why they are not wanting to be in compliance with the program. And ultimately, it would then be the determination of the city to issue a letter or some other type of outreach encouraging that customer to enroll.
Okay, this might go back to Patrick, but on the, on, on the 2C exhibit in the staff report, there's a 7% franchise fee in the line 10. And is that a monthly fee that the city gets back from Republic?
Again, since I have, you know, I've been working with, with HFNH for some time now, if you recall, AB 1594 as well. I wanted to give Haley a chance to respond to that question. Because she worked so hard on these calculations, I don't want to misrepresent those calculations. Haley?
Absolutely. Good evening, City Council. So on that exhibit 2C is the buildup, and that franchise fee you are seeing on row 10 is the franchise fee that's being removed from the current customer rate revenues that were reported by Republic at that time. That, that franchise fee is currently being paid to the city through the current agreement and is its own section per section 3.2.1 of the franchise agreement. So that is something that is coming into the city.
So does that mean there'll be an additional $10,000 to the city each month?
So that would be dependent on the actual, you know, customers that enroll in the program in each of the rates on exhibit on exhibit 2B has the actual buildup, and you would see exactly what the franchise fee would be for each of the rates. So based on how many customers subscribe would be the amount of franchise fee the city would receive.
So this is an additional amount of money each month that the city will receive based on this increase for this item, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess this might go back to Patrick or the city, but if that's the case, and we're getting an extra $10,000 each month, I was just wondering if it makes sense to continue covering the $30,000 offset of marketing that were, that's being proposed in this item?
And that would absolutely turn back to Patrick.
That is, that's correct. Thank you, Haley, and thank you, Councilmember Moore. That, that is really up to the council to provide direction on what course, what's the best course of action. Yeah, I made the recommendation that, that we could potentially pull from the two funds that I mentioned, the financial impact on the staff report. But absolutely, we could, we could pull from that fund. There wouldn't be, there's not really any cons from my perspective pulling them from the franchise fee. So.
I guess, yeah, my, my point is that if we're gonna be making, if it, let's assume it's $10,000 a month times 12, $120,000. I think it's fair to give back at least the $30,000 back to the, to reduce the cost a little bit for the businesses. I'd like to hear from the other council members.
One, one thing we should, this is Craig, one thing we should keep in mind, too, is in a year, and after these changes take effect, a year later, then the city will incur enforcement responsibilities, which is going to, you know, likely, likely incur some costs for the city. So in the longer term, this, this legislation, this new arrangement is gonna increase enforcement costs for the city.
And if I can add to that real quick, Craig is absolutely right that, that there will be more of an enforcement piece, and CalRecycle, the state agency managing all of this, has said such, and, and also meetings and, and the correspondence that I've received, and I'm sure that Haley and Manny have received and have heard of. There is a potential also, in addition to new legislation or new legislation that we will implement, SFP 1383, and maybe potentially some other environmental solid, solid waste and recycling legislation that'll come down the path again and, and require us to to fund these unfunded mandates per se.
Yeah, I guess my, my response is that if, if it's $30,000 out of the 120, there's still money for the enforcement, so.
Correct. There will still be a funding. We do, as I mentioned in the staff report, do utilize some of that funding for other things. And I mentioned some of those things in, in my report earlier. But there, but we could potentially, you know, reduce the, the amount of things that we do in terms of, you know, for a lot of our public events, we buy giveaways and do outreach for solid waste and recycling throughout the year. You know, as I mentioned as well, we offset some of the costs for staff time related to solid waste and recycling. So we'd look at a number of things and, and could make those shifts to accommodate if that was the council's direction.
Just to clarify, Patrick, is, this is new, new revenue for the city, right? Because it's an additional amount, so this would be an additional $10,000 a month, so you're not really taking anything away by continuing the marketing. You're reducing the increase of the, of the amount.
If I might chime in on that calculation, that $10,000 is what the city is currently getting and receiving. It's not an additional $10,000 of franchise fee. It would be 7% of whatever the organics revenue is. So, for example, if you have the current cost of $8,000 or about $8,000 per month, it would be $8,000, 7% of $8,000 in additional revenue, not $10 additional thousand dollars. That's the, the total revenue the city is currently generating based on all solid waste rates.
Okay, okay, I understand. All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have any additional questions, Tom?
I'm not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Vera Papa.
Yeah, I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Sistarsik?
No questions at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I would just comment that I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Moore on trying to soften some of the impact on our businesses, at least initially. And as long as, as we know that down the road, there will be additional costs involved, whether it be by additional state mandates or just things that arise. I think we, if we know that, we can perhaps do a little more in-depth planning for that, but still be able to offer initially the relief. So those are my comments. So, do we now have a motion and a second for? Item I.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you, City Clerk. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Mayor Kalme, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. We have no public hearings tonight. We have no unfinished business under new business. We have item L, and this is to review and determine that the city council will continue to conduct public meetings by teleconference pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. And we'll have Attorney Steele brief us on this, please.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. As you all know, throughout the pandemic, we have been meeting in this virtual format under the authority of an executive order that was issued by Governor Newsom to allow a kind of relaxed rule under the Brown Act. And some of the teleconference requirements that would normally be applied were not applied for these pandemic-related meetings. The governor's executive order expired September 30th. And at the request of the League of Cities and other organizations, the legislature adopted a new bill, AB 361, which extended the authority to do this in this virtual format, as long as there's a state of emergency in effect and social distancing measures are required or recommended. If the council determines that it is necessary to meet virtually in order to protect the public and council members and staff from health risks. And so at the moment, given the current situation, although it's improving, the city manager still recommends that the council consider meeting in this virtual setting with an eye toward coming back to an in-person setting as soon as it seems safe to do so. And so the requirement of AB 361 and now Government Code Section 54953E is that the council renew, review the situation every 30 days and make that determination that the virtual meeting is necessary to avoid these risks potentially to the health and safety of attendees in the council and staff. So this is the first of those reviews, and you can expect to see this item on your agenda now every 30 days, which is what the statute requires. Although we anticipate that until we're ready to recommend that in-person meetings are appropriate, we anticipate this will just be a consent calendar review every month so the council can look at the situation and determine if you're still believe that, that virtual meetings are the best way to go. So on this item, we would recommend, the city manager and I would recommend that you review the situation and determine that the city council and the other boards and commissions in the city will continue to conduct public meetings by teleconference with the findings required under Government Code Section 54953. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from council? No questions or any comments? Okay, hearing done. I'll call for a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, City Clerk, please?
Yes, Mayor Kalme, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabat, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. Next, we have item M, which is a study session on the user and regulatory fee study for community development and public works. So this will be presented by our Finance Director, Kelly Tilford. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me just one moment while I. Can you see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening. Tonight, we will be discussing the evaluation and proposed changes to the user and regulatory fees for the Public Works Department and Community Development Department. In order to provide an objective and unbiased analysis, the city hired ClearSource Financial Consulting, an expert used by many local governments to study and analyze the costs the city incurs to provide fee-based services and to assist the city in developing a reasonable fee structure that achieves the appropriate level of cost recovery for the city of Seal Beach. Before we go through our presentation tonight, I want to provide a little bit of history to help the council understand why we are here today. The last time the city underwent a fee study was in May 2012, nearly 10 years ago. It is a best practice to conduct a fee study every three to five years, depending on what is happening in the economy. As a result of this long timeframe in between studies, our costs have outpaced the fees that we charge, and the general fund is now subsidizing a fairly significant portion of those costs. This is part of the structural deficit challenge that the city faced in prior years, but this issue has still not been corrected. If we don't take a look at these fees and try to keep pace with the cost of providing these services, we will run into financial challenges once again. During this study session, Mr. Mattson and the team with ClearSource Financial Consulting spent time with each department to understand the process and the time put into each item in your packet tonight to really ensure that the report shows an accurate representation of how much it costs to provide these services. In his presentation, Mr. Mattson is going to explain what fees are included, how fees are established and calculated, and finally, he will walk through some of the proposed fee changes in your packet. At the conclusion, excuse me, the conclusion of your presentation, of the presentation, Mr. Mattson and I, along with Steve Mider, our Public Works Director, and Barry Curtis, our interim Community Development Director, will be available for any questions the council or the community may have. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Mattson with ClearSource Financial.
Well, thank you, Kelly. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm unmuted. Is everyone hearing me okay?
We are.
Perfect. So as Kelly mentioned, our firm helps communities throughout the state do work similar to what Seal Beach is undertaking right now. We examine the cost of providing various city services and help communities figure out how to recover those costs. This evening, we're dealing with a topic that is commonly referred to as user and regulatory fees. These are different than taxes. These are fees, and they are collected for when you are providing sort of a discreet service or performing a discreet activity on behalf of a resident or, or business in the community rather than providing these broad, community-wide services. So we use tax dollars to fund those broad, community-wide services. We typically think of tax dollars as funding public safety, public works, park maintenance type services. But communities frequently use things like fees and charges to fund services where there is a directly identifiable benefit. These are things like plan review or permitting or field inspection services. That a mechanism for recovery of those types of costs are, are the fees that we're examining this evening. Next slide, please. So just to put it into, to even clearer terms, when we think of the things we're examining, examples might be construction permits, that plan review, the inspections. If I want to figure out if I can get a project entitled, or I'm looking for conformance to city zoning code, I want to encroach within the city right away. These types of activities are the, the fee-related services that we're examining. But as a reminder to the council, this study does not examine taxes. It does not examine assessments. It does not examine utility rates. So the things that affect the broad swath of your community on a day-to-day basis or a monthly basis are not being examined in this study. This is the activities, the, the fees that would apply if you're taking some sort of discreet action like a remodel, a tenant improvement, new construction, those kind of things. Next slide. So cities, we, we mentioned this idea of that community-wide benefit versus specific benefit. Cities also just on a routine basis, they, they examine their, their fees and more and more, they're trying to proactively manage fees. The reason we examine fees is to ensure that we are complying with sort of these cost-of-service mandates, those legislative requirements that help us understand the difference between a fee and a tax. So in order to maintain status as a fee, we don't want to over-recover. We're not in the profit-making business. We have a legal ceiling that we want to, to stay under or at in, in order to remain a fee. Also, that idea of looking for a direct mechanism for recovery when we provide a direct service or, or serve like a response to an individual action. So direct beneficiary, direct recovery. And then the final two points, I think are really important to, to, to highlight, and that's the idea that most of the services that live in a fee schedule reside within the city's general fund. That general fund has a lot of competing pressures, and as a city council, you're trying to always figure out how to make best use of those general fund resources. The results of these studies give you tools to figure out, you know, if I recover more of these fee-related costs, do I free up by definition more general fund resources to provide that broad, community-wide benefit? And then finally, an important topic is this idea of meeting that service-level expectation. So as, as residents, as, as business owners, we have an expectation that if we come to City Hall and require service, we'll receive service. We want to be able to fund to that expectation, so we want to be able to set fees or consider establishing fees that help us continue to meet the service-level expectations of the community. Next slide, please. Because these are fees and not taxes, if the city council does decide to move forward and consider these as, as part of a council agenda item in a public hearing, they would be established via a vote of the council. So it takes a vote of the council rather than a broad, community-wide vote. But in order to, to be considered fees, we want to make sure that there is a correlation between cost and, and the fee, and that we do not exceed the city's cost of providing these services. Next slide, please. Throughout the report that you received as part of this agenda packet, there were these two concepts that were discussed in great detail. One is the idea of cost of service, and the other is the idea of cost recovery. I want to walk through both of those quickly, just to make sure that those two concepts, that we think about them the same way for purposes of this study. So first, let's talk cost of service. Would you forward the slide, Kelly? Because these are service-based fees, really, the primary driver of cost is either in-house city labor or contractual services that you use to perform various field inspection tasks or plan review tasks. But the bottom line is it's this idea of a labor cost. So we want to value labor, and, and what's important to realize is that labor is more than just my hourly wage rate. There's benefits built into it. There's services and supplies costs that, that I use as I perform my work. There's also costs to support payroll functioning, human resources, IP, general management and supervision that I receive in order to allow me to go out and provide those direct services to the community. So we call these a fully burdened cost. That is what we're calculating is a fully burdened cost of service. And then the other driver of cost would be time. So something that it takes less effort to perform would have a lower cost of service than something that takes more effort to perform. If I have an hourly rate of $150 an hour and something takes me two hours to perform, I would say that's a $300 cost of service. If another activity takes me four hours to perform, we'd say that's a $600 cost of service. Our cost of service represents our legal ceiling. That's our maximum fee amount. The council can set fees up to the cost of service, but we don't want to exceed that cost of service. Next slide, please. So once we identify cost of service and realize that is our ceiling, then as a city council, you make decisions regarding whether to recover up to the cost of service or something less. And, and we talked about those two important bullet points earlier. I want to talk, I want to spend some time on this slide. I, I won't be long-winded, but the key here is, once we identify that a certain activity costs the city, let's say an activity costs the city $300 to perform. So, so we perform a service and it, by the time our labor's done doing a typical level of service, there's a $300 cost. If the city chooses to recover a fee of $150, the $300 cost was still incurred and was still paid for out of city funds. You just received a $150 offset of those costs, but the other 150 was covered from some other city revenue source, which is typically that general fund. So the cost didn't change, just the makeup of the recovery of the cost change. So we would say that's partial cost recovery. Some of the cost was recovered from the fee payer, and the remainder of that cost was covered by the rest of the Seal Beach community, either via resident property taxes or sales taxes from businesses, those kind of things. Next slide, please. When we think about cost recovery, we can think about it in, in just these broad terms. So here are some general cost recovery levels that, that communities think about, and they vary depending on the type of fee-related services you're examining. So let's move forward, Kelly. So you could have little to no cost recovery if you feel like there is really this broad public benefit from providing certain services. A lot of times, maybe youth sports programming or programming for disadvantaged or vulnerable populations, you have low-cost recovery targets. Sometimes you have no cost recovery where you're trying to encourage some, some participation, or you just feel like there really is a, a broad public safety component, a broad community-wide benefit, those kind of things. But for the fee-related services where we're examining this evening, we would go to the next slide, and most of the time, we would be thinking about either moderate or full cost recovery. I've circled this idea of full cost recovery because in our recent experience, we're seeing that push towards full cost recovery for the fee-related services that are under review as part of this, this evening's portion of the study. And the reason is because we can see a clear individual benefit. There, the, the service is highly regulatory in nature. If we look around, we can see that the fees that, even at their adjusted levels, would be in line with other regional communities. These kind of things would be sort of influencers to push a city towards consideration of full cost recovery. If the city said, I, I don't want full cost recovery, then you could think about moderate cost recovery for any of the, you know, where you say there, there is a, a great private benefit, but I also see a public benefit here, or I'm worried about compliance. There's a, you know, a full gamut of reasons you might target certain cost recovery levels. The idea here is that it is a policy decision, and it is at the council's discretion, but we don't want to exceed full cost recovery for fee-related services. Next slide, please. So what we see, everything we've talked about up So what we see, everything we've talked about up to this slide is really um it applies throughout California. Specific to Seal Beach is what comes on the following slides. You have a a hundred plus page report. So there's a lot of material. There's a lot of information. We've tried to pick out the broad categories of information that we think would matter to the city council to help you. Um as you look at it from a high level and then you can dive deeper into the agenda packet a- as desired. So next slide, please. What we see is uh this is a table that shows you what it costs um Seal Beach today to perform these fee related services. And compares that to what typically comes in the door in the form of fee revenue. So we'd say today it costs in the neighborhood of two million dollars in a given year to provide these fee related services. And just over a million dollars typically comes in. So that means um that the city's general fund is subsidizing about nine hundred and forty five thousand dollars in fee related services. This will vary from year to year depending on volume and project types. But we'd say that's about a fifty five percent cost recovery. The cost recovery level varies based on broad category of services. You see a higher cost recovery in your building fees than you do in your planning fees. But even within your planning fees, the cost recovery level might vary from fee to fee. And the same thing goes for building fees. So you may have um hundreds of different scenarios for building fees or planning fees. And that is very common throughout the state because you're trying to build a fee schedule that can accommodate uh the different situations that might walk in the door, the different development projects that might walk in the door. Uh remodel scenarios, those kind of things. So there's hundreds of individual fee items. This shows you on a broad spectrum overall cost recovery. But we looked for a sort of fee by fee to develop this analysis. If this uh this is a study session item, so there is no decisions being made tonight in terms of formal adoption. But what we have presented to the council for purposes of this study session is an illustration of um oh a oh a direction you may choose to move forward with for agendizing and formal consideration. If you did decide to go along that road, what we would say is that cost recovery would be significantly enhanced. But we don't think we could get to full cost recovery overnight. So there would be this idea of a push towards full cost recovery where um where it's pragmatic and and we feel like it's possible without pushing yourself to some sort of regional outlier. But also in consideration of um targets for for our residents and our businesses and things like that. So there would be an enhanced recovery of about four hundred and seventy thousand, assuming you had these typical levels of volume. And and what we want to point out here is that's four hundred and seventy thousand to offset the cost of existing services. So this doesn't assume uh in uh, you know, increased staffing or enhanced service levels. It assumes that money to offset costs that that occur today and are just being under recovered at this time. Next slide, please. So when we perform the analysis, we start by just strictly examining the city's cost of service. We don't really think about what other agencies in the region charge for similar services. Because your your model is unique, your community is unique. And and our initial goal is to figure out what does it cost you to provide service? And look at that as compared to what you're currently charging. But then as a secondary effort, primarily to help the city council and to help staff as you try and figure out how would we want to move forward with this information? What we do is we try and find, you know, some high volume type permits. Um or permits that are really easily comparable from agency to agency and say uh today, this is where Seal Beach would fall in the regional fee spectrum of of who we're comparing against. And if new fees were adopted tomorrow, uh based on this illustrative scenario, this is where the new fees would be, and this is where you would be positioned um compared to these uh neighboring regional agencies. So so this is what we find. What we find is on these high volume categories are readily comparable categories. I think because as Kelly mentioned, it's been about a decade since you've updated. You're really at the low end of the fee spectrum today. And if we moved fees and still had um, you know, sort of strategic decisions about cost recovery in certain areas and things like that, what we think is we could position Seal Beach to be at the mid to to upper mid range of the fee spectrum. It's really important here to note, we mentioned there's hundreds and hundreds of fees in every community's fee schedule and they're worded differently. And there's different services provided, uh sometimes with the exact same fee name. So what we're showing you is intended to be a representative sample, but we could pick a different fee potentially. And you may be at the low end of the spectrum. And you pick a third fee and you're at the high end of the spectrum, but we're just trying to show you this general pattern that we're seeing that hey, it looks like today you're at the lower end of the spectrum. And if you made moves, you'd move yourself to that mid to upper mid range of the spectrum. Uh Kelly, would you move us just generally every few seconds through these next four or five slides? Because they're all showing the same thing. These are just these minor residential type permits that we're looking at here. Next slide. Minor residential type permits where we're trying to encourage compliance, but we know there is a cost um to the city for performing this work. Next slide. Um this is a high volume type permit scenario. Next slide.
Terry, if I may jump in here, I think it's important to know to to note. Currently, right now, Seal Beach doesn't have a fee for this install. So some of this is a course correction on new types of services that we're providing because it's been so long.
And Kelly, uh may I chime in? Thank you so much for bringing that up. And just in case it helps the council, this is editorial in nature. Um but we are seeing more and more communities, even when there is a focus on hey, I do want to encourage, I I do want to encourage um activities that that benefit the environment, that are environmentally conscious. Um we're seeing movement in the solar permit fees because it sound from what we hear from the develop uh the development desk, the the building departments that we work with is there is an expectation from the solar contractors. Just this idea of this concept of cost recovery. So it's not uncommon. Even in agencies where we used to see uh maybe targeted subsidy on the solar idea ten years ago. It's it's now more of um an accepted process. And and even amongst the contractors, there's just an awareness that permit fees will apply. That it's outlined in in the government code uh of how how those permit fees should be um calculated at the maximum level and these kind of things. So it it's common today. Next slide, please. This is a, now you're getting into some comparison types where you can really see a fee schedule match from agency to agency. This would be like a minor residential remodel uh building permit. And you're at the lower lower mid end today, you'd be at the the upper uh mid end. If you if you move forward with this illustrative scenario. Next slide, please. But even at the upper mid end, what we found was everyone is in a pretty close range. So you might be at the upper mid end, but you're not a radical outlier. Um you you're all in the pretty close range. This one's intended to show that on the planning side, you can have differentiations in complexity. So you could have uh the same same fee name, temporary use permit. But a minor temporary use permit may involve a significantly less staff effort or um than a major. You continue to differentiate between minor and major. You try and build subcategories so that um the fee correlates to the level of effort required. So a minor permit would pay significantly less than a major effort. Major typically we think of as um city council review required or planning commission review requires something like that. Next slide, please. Appeal fees, we we like to show these appeals are expensive. Uh they are very difficult to process. Staff usually tries to work very hard with any applicants or interested members of the community to try and help them understand uh the rationale behind decisions that are being made. Um but the idea here is that um we're we're still trying to you know, we we value the community's ability to appeal. And we're still trying to be strategic about how we set those appeal fees. Next slide, please. Just as a reminder, you may look through these hundreds of fees and think, you know, how how does something cost fifteen hundred dollars or or five hundred dollars, whatever the number is. The 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 look and feel of the community is significantly influenced by um the development standards you have in place, the level of care you give to to your residents, to your businesses. There's a lot of um public information, public um sort of education being provided. You do intake meetings, you do initial meetings, there's correspondence, multiple rounds of review, reports, field inspections. There's just a lot of effort associated with reviewing and approving um development and and aesthetically pleasing development, safe development, those kind of things. It it's uh intensive process. And so um when we calculate the cost of service, we identify you know, some of these things at the planning level could take forty hours and over overtime, those kind of things. Next slide. So overall, a- as we reminded you, that this is not a public hearing to consider fees. This is an informational item for the city council. But the bottom line that we're seeing is there is room for enhanced recovery on these services where we do see you know, a clearly identifiable individual benefit or the causation being some individual action. So there is room to adjust fees without um exceeding the city's cost of service. If a if fees were increased to some level of enhanced cost recovery, then by definition we're using less general fund resources to to cover the costs of those those services that are currently being subsidized. Next slide. So the action plan following this evening's presentation i- is covered on the next slide. Any feedback that we receive from the city council this evening, we want to to incorporate. Uh we want to answer your questions and then ultimately we're looking for direction from the city council to determine whether to return and agendize this item for a formal public hearing uh that would um be a a publicly noticed public hearing or publicly noticed hearing to to consider changes to the user regulatory fee schedule. We think a good move for the city council, if you do decide to move forward with some sort of fee adjustment is to authorize future inflationary adjustments and provide direction for periodic review. So uh more and more of our communities say, I don't want these things. I may undergo a significant study like this every three to five years. Um but I don't want to wait three to five years between any update. And so instead they authorize general inflationary adjustments that would follow regional inflation to keep you from, you know, these long periods of stagnation uh and then sort of severe spikes. Next slide, please. So this concludes my presentation. Thank you so much to the city council and to the mayor for your attention. Uh if you have any questions or feedback, I'm I'm here to assist and I know other staff members are standing by.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you for for giving that presentation to the council. And and Mr. Mayor, before we hand it back to you. Um I do want to reiterate that, you know, it's a very lengthy presentation, a a a lot to absorb. But we do want to hear your feedback um so that we can bring a very thoughtful item back to council for consideration at the public hearing. It has been a very long time since these fees were studied, which is representative of what you're seeing in the study itself for some of those larger increases. Um but as I mentioned, uh Terry Madsen, myself, our public works director, Steve Meider, and our interim community development director, Barry Curtis, are all available for questions um if you have any at this time. I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um do we have any comments from the council? We'll start with council member Moore.
Yes, thank thank you for the presentation. Um I'm looking at the uh some of the examples. The ones that stuck out to me was the temporary use permit going up quite a bit. Could you give a few examples of of what cases that would be? And also on the appeals uh slide, I noticed that was going up quite a bit. If you give a few examples of how that, who would be affected and what that would entail, that'd be great.
Or um Barry or Mr. Curtis, are you available to answer that question for us? I know you did a little research on that.
Uh I I am. Um council member, um the the question on the temporary use permits. Um probably the most recent uh good example of what those are or the um some of the improvements that were done to 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 uh as a result of the pandemic. Um so allowing um some of the temporary uses, the businesses were able to to take advantage of to um get through the the worst period of the of the pandemic is one example. Um other types of temporary uses um are are just generally uses that are of a short term duration. Um and and again, this is really looking at kind of how much time it takes to to process these and the and the recommended fees are reflective of that with um some reduction for uh um below full cost recovery.
And then there was another slide on appeals. Uh is that appealing for a a violation or something?
Um um council member Moore, really that's talking about um appeal of of a planning commission decision or appeal of a decision by the director of community development. So it might be a conditional use permit that that uh an applicant is denied and wants to appeal that to the city council. Um it could be uh another type of a a minor conditional use permit that's approved by the planning commission and a, you know, neighbor or another um person wishes to appeal that beyond the applicant. Um those are some examples of what what type of appeals we're talking about.
Okay, and that was it considered, I guess, part of our process recently is to make things more efficient with technology. Um so I guess the the time that's calculated for people's time for some of these, is that taken into consideration that we could optimize things over the next few years?
Councilman, yes, that was taken into account. Um and and I think another important thing um that Mr. Madsen indicated was, you know, we would be looking at these on a more regular basis as we move forward. And to the extent there are improvements and and um expeditious things that that improve um or reduce the amount of time it takes staff to process these, um those will show up in those future reviews.
Okay, okay, thank you.
This is Sandra. I um noticed on the charts that were presented that the fee increases that uh would be part of a new program for us um increasing our fees. They don't extend beyond really the moderate or the median range of other cities in our location. I think that using beach cities uh examples was probably appropriate. I know that it's always difficult to try and get cost recovery. And I in no way, um although I would like to, there's no way that I would encourage um full cost recovery because it is really uh would make it pretty expensive for people to begin to do uh projects. And when you think about a fifty thousand dollar project, a a home makeover, room addition, I I don't know if you can even do that for fifty thousand anymore. But the cost of the permits are such a small percentage of the overall cost. are such a small percentage of the overall cost of doing a project that it really, it becomes an annoyance instead of something that you want to buy like a showerhead or a new tub. You know, having an inspector come out six or seven or eight times during the construction or more than that costs money and we're paying for it. We're subsidizing the permit as it is. And I think that looking at mid-range costs is much more appropriate than looking at really full cost recovery. That's all.
Yeah, hi, this is Councilmember Vera Pop. I had a couple of comments. Do you mind going back to the beginning of the slide presentation where you talk about level of service? I think it was like the third or fourth slide.
Right there. For slide four. Is that where you're talking about, Councilmember? The bottom one?
Yeah, yeah. And I guess, you know, I'm not opposed to the recovery fees, but my initial thought is how do you get the level of service increased with the same amount of staff, even though you're charging more for the customer or the resident?
So we're not talking about a level of service increase here in this slide. What we're talking about is the the city council as part of its annual budgeting process influenced by the city manager's guidance and and staff assistance. But the city council adopts sort of an operations plan and and sets a service level expectation based on staffing levels and authorized contract services and things like that. That is what we're trying to continue to meet. It gets more and more difficult to meet those service levels and to continue those service levels without recovering costs.
So the level of servers or the 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 quickness or response rate wouldn't change at all or would be the same or would that be a factor of new hires or how would that work? Because I think in general, that's probably, I mean, other than costs is is, you know, the biggest complaint I receive is, you know, timing, obviously. It's always about I'm waiting for this and I'm waiting for the city to do that. I'm waiting for the city to do that. So how does that get incorporated in this, you know, this fee increase and 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 to, you know, to add on to that, the city hasn't increased the fees since, I think, you said, 2012? So now now we're trying to catch up, fast forward, you know, nine years to catch up to get seventy something percent of the fees. And because the city, and I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, I'm just talking in general. And, you know, from what I see as a resident and a council member, you know, the city did not increase their fees, you know, accordingly through the years. Now, if you go down to the, can you go to the other slides, please, where you start talking about the the increase on HVAC, I think was the first one?
And Councilmember, can I clarify something? Just I'm, I wouldn't say the city has not increased fees. I don't think they've done a formal study in a decade. So I think these have been adjusted, but not a a study to this magnitude hasn't been conducted.
Okay, so like residential HVAC, like how many are we talking about in a year roughly? Do we know, like, is it? I mean, I don't see a lot going in my neighborhood. Maybe in other neighborhoods are going in a lot. I mean, I'm just kind of curious of of that.
You know, I don't have an a volume statistic handy for you. We do see this as sort of this commonly identified a permit that would affect a residential, you know, your homeowner. Because it's not, it's not a new build. It's a, it's a change out of something that that's foul.
Right. So
What I will say here, though, is this is targeting partial cost recovery on on the the residential HVAC. So it's it's still not full cost recovery. Remember, there's, you you have to issue your permit, you have to do your field inspection. So we're moving to enhance cost recovery. But it could still be more significant than what's shown here.
Right. So this would be, you know, a a hundred percent increase on the cost. And then can can you go back to the other slide where it shows the table of each percentage increase for each? I know, I think it's, you know, that one right there. So all the all, all of these are going up. And I'm like I said, I'm for fee recovery. I just think, you know, going up, you know, this many percentage points is is kind of a red flag for me without, you know, diving into it in detail because some of these go up significantly. And I think, you know, the the burden would be on our residents, basically. I mean, are you are you deciphering whether it's residential or business owned or how is this chart laid out?
Councilmember, thank you for that question. I think that's an important point for for all the council members. Kelly, would you mind taking us back to slide fourteen? Because I think the council member brings up a great point. So this is what you see here. Yeah, it's a hundred percent increase in fees. And occasionally what we see here from a city council member is, you know, I'd be fine doing a ten percent increase or something like that. And that is totally an option that that the council can choose. What we see here, though, is that the the $150 recommendation wasn't an accidental recommendation. Because while a phase in of, let's say, ten percent, you know, you say, I I'm willing to go ten percent a year or something like that. You're going to be six or seven years and you will still be at the radical low end of the fee spectrum. So moving this one, that's why we don't we don't just sit and say, oh, it's a blanket ten percent recommendation that we're walking into for city council. We sort of look fee category by fee category and say, do we think moving this one to $150 would put you in some sort of a regional outlier position or something like that? And what we'd say is actually leaving it relatively unchanged or just a small increase here is is what puts you more of a regional outlier. Does that make sense, Councilmember?
Yeah, of course. And 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 I mean, $150 in the big scheme of things isn't, you know, a lot of money. It's just that's doubling. Like, go go to the next page then. Okay, that one goes from $40 to $160.
And that's right. So what's happening here is we know that that staff time is worth, let's say, roughly $160 an hour. Something like that is what it costs by by the time you do salaries, benefits, services, supplies, adjustments for leave, all these kind of things. And that is in line with the region. The numbers we calculated for Seal Beach were in line with the region. And so here was an example where we were telling the city council, you could adjust your fee and you could remain in line with the region, but the region has you know, it depends on the community. You you might be 160 or 120 or 220, but you're still generally in line with the region because we're dealing with small dollars here.
Right. And I'm not, you know, questioning the total amount. I'm more, you know, concerned about the difference from now, you know, the current versus proposed. Now, now, I mean, this isn't, you know, this is another, not a very big dollar value. But it is a significant percentage increase. How about the next slide? What does that look like? So you change your water heater and now you're paying, you know, not double, but a little less than double. You know, that's not that big a deal. How about the next page? So solar roof, that's a good one. I mean, we we're not charging anything, which isn't very, you know, good on the city's part, but to go from zero to three hundred plus, I mean, that's a significant increase, right? I mean, in in one full swoop.
It's a significant increase. And again, we are not trying to talk you into the increase, so please don't see it this way. But it, just in case it's helpful to you, what we would say here is, yes, it is a significant increase. But if I'm a contractor in Seal Beach and I work in Redondo Beach and I work in Orange and I work in Huntington Beach, I'm used to the number that you're going to tell me at Seal Beach. You are the anomaly today. And so if I move you to 385, it's not that I'm taking you outside the boundaries. I'm taking you more in line to what the contractors are seeing at these other communities.
Right. I mean, how about the next page? So that increases about $300. That's not, you know, too big a deal, I guess, right?
Again, what we're trying to look here is if, is there something that takes you to some sort of regional outlier? And you look at this slide and you say, well, I'm at the, I'm at the upper end, but it's by $70 or, you know, something like that, $100 out of $1,600. They're all pretty close to each other. So you are, you're bundled with Orange, Newport, Redondo, Huntington. We would call those all sort of a bundle. It just, there's just not a lot of differentiation from agency to agent.
Right. And how about the next page? Is there any more? Is it okay?
So what we were trying to show here, there's, there should be four red boxes. One of them didn't show up here, but Seal Beach Current Minor, you see it at the bottom there. Kelly's, Kelly's put her mouse on the current major.
Yeah, 300.
Yeah, what we're showing here is you were, you're at the low end of the spectrum, even though you're trying to differentiate between the idea of minor and major. We're trying to show the city council that staff is still still trying to distinguish between a minor and a major category so that something that's minor is going to walk out the door paying less than something that's major. And and just showing you where you would move i- if you move forward with a fee adjustment. On this one, this is an example of a planning fee and staff worked hard. If you look again, remember that report is a hundred plus pages and there's hundreds of fees. But on these planning fees, these are these early stage projects. A lot of times, I think it was Councilmember Masalaavid that asked, you know, are we thinking about residential versus business? There were discrete considerations of, you know, for this category of fees, let's target 25% recovery. For this category of fees, let's target 50% recovery, 75% recovery. And up to full cost recovery for really complex type issues, stuff like that. So there was distinct thought between, in terms of initial recommendations for targeted cost recovery levels. It wasn't on across the board. Everything should move to target 75% cost recovery. It was decided on a case by case basis.
So 340 to 1800 for major.
The major, you got it. Because the idea here is that if we went back to the time estimate for a major temporary use permit, the idea is that, remember, we talked about some of these things take a lot of time. This is 10 hours of time potentially and not even potentially routinely to to review those requests for service, to to figure out, can we authorize that type of use on a temporary basis? So it's it's targeting recovery of more than a day's worth of work.
Right, right. Like you said, I'm not opposed to it. It's just the major difference. It'd be nice if it could be incrementally, you know, increased every year or something, but it seems like you're only going to look at it every three to five years. So it it just, you know, on the outset, it just raises a lot of red flags for me. But, I mean, I understand it, you know, totally.
Councilmember Vera Papa, can I, can I point out one thing to kind of sum up what Mr. Madsen's been talking about? And this goes back to your very initial question about increase in service versus increase in fees. One of the key reasons why I wanted to bring this forward now, but also why we're separating, I didn't mention that when I first introduced the item. But normally a fee study comes to council as one big package with all of the city's fees, including recreation, marine safety, PD, and then all of our internal providers like finance and city manager and city clerk. We separated it out because we really wanted to make it easier to digest, but also allow for a separate conversation. Because these are fees that are not everyday fees charged to to our customers. Their fees charged for development within the city. It's a a resident who's going through a major renovation. There are some of the smaller items like the HVAC changeout and, you know, I think we saw the hot water heater. Those are included as well, but the overwhelming majority of the big increases are on development. One of the things I want to point out on the slide that's showing is how much the general fund is currently subsidizing. The $945,000 number that you see here, this is taxpayer dollars, property tax, sales tax, occupancy tax. It's all of the general revenues that we earn that are supposed to be used for providing services to the community. It's also supposed to be used for subsidizing fees like recreation fees. Those are the ones that we want to continue to offer a low cost recovery that the general fund should be subsidizing because we want to increase participation in in recreation and and socialization. But right now, we're investing almost a million dollars of general fund money a year just in public works and community development services for fee-based services. The goal is to achieve a higher level of cost recovery, not complete cost recovery, but a higher level so that the general fund, the taxpayer dollars are used for other city services that benefit the the community as a whole. Not just the select few who are pulling these kinds of permits. It does look like a large percentage because it has been a number of years since a study has been conducted. But we have been increasing fees just at a much slower pace. What I don't want to see happen is that we we don't take a fast enough course correction. And then we end up with some, you know, some structural deficit challenges going forward. Because this is just the first set of fees that are coming forward. We are planning on bringing forth the remaining fees, you know, PD, recreation, marine safety and the rest. We're hoping to bring that to you early spring for consideration. So, you know, these are the ones that we do want to achieve a higher cost recovery just because we want to use the taxpayer dollars on things that benefit the community as a whole. And that's what you're seeing here is is an effort to reduce the use of general fund dollars so we can use them on some of those higher priority, I mean, even the higher priority capital projects that we've been talking about for the last couple of years.
Yeah, I get it. I understand. Okay. Well, that's all the questions I had. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I I also had a question. I think it was partly partly answered in that exchange, but it came, it it's about regarding the changeouts of the, like, the water heater or the HVAC where there's a big difference between, say, Manhattan Beach and the rest of us. Are are there, are are the, is it because that we're not getting, we're we're choosing to not get full recovery on our fees where Manhattan Beach is is getting full recovery or or are we missing out on on some kind of expenses that there? expenses that they're picking up on? I, I wasn't too sure whether we're just choosing to make this uh, less expensive for our residents so that they would comply or?
So I can, I can answer that question in part. We did, we did not establish Manhattan Beach's fees, so we don't know um, how their costs were established up into that four hundred dollar plus uh, range that you're seeing here. It did look like they were including multiple rounds of, multiple divisions reviews. Uh, we did not so, so there is uh, less than full cost recovery targeted on these minor residential permits, but it's not a humongous subsidy. So even if we targeted up to full cost recovery, you wouldn't be in the range of Manhattan Beach. You might look closer to Huntington Beach or something like that. Um, so we wouldn't be getting up there. I just can't tell you why they got there, but when we did our work with Seal Beach, we would not have gotten you there even at the full cost recovery scenario.
Okay. Sure.
My apologies. I got one thing. Um, another thing to consider is some of these cities who are down here in the lower level, the lower section. It may have been a number of years since they had fee studies conducted too. So sometimes it's, it's just a timing thing. If they're, you know, three years in and they still have a couple of years before they do a study, they might end up just a little bit lower. So sometimes that has an impact as well. When we do bring this item back to council for consideration at the public hearing, I can bring, I can do a little research to see exactly when each of these cities' last studies were.
Okay. And I, I don't know if it was two thousand twelve, but I remember some kind of discussion at city council when they, I think they reduced their fee for solar because at that time they were trying to encourage it. Maybe now they don't need to, but I think that was a uh, a decision that was made. It wasn't just because someone forgot to increase it, I think. So I don't, I don't know. It's been a long, it has been quite a while. So, thank you.
And that lines up with what we would expect, that it wasn't accidental. It was intended to encourage. Um, but what we're hearing from our other communities we work with is that um, the fee is not, the fee as, um, as long as you're in line with what the government code says hasn't been shown to be a discourager of solar.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor Calmick, are you there?
Yes, um, as far as my comments, you know, we're, we're faced with quite a conundrum in that the math shows us that we are behind the curve in the cost recovery. Um, however, our, our desire to make things uh, easier on our residents, um, you know, causes us to pause when it comes to the great, some of the percentages that we're looking at. Um, one of the things that I wanted to um have, have you clarify for us, Kelly, is, you know, the, the cost of of doing an inspection or the cost performing the task that we're basing the fees upon. Um, tell us a little bit more about how how that's calculated. And it's, it's not a number that you pick out of the air based on the fact that the particular employee is making so much an hour fully burdened. Uh, give us a little more background.
Sure. That's actually a really good question. Um, that, that's hard to detail out in the presentation. Um, but I'll, I'll try to verbally explain it. Um, so the first part of the fee study was determining um, the cost, the hourly cost of providing the services. And that was um, based on the adopted budget. We provided that to Mr. Mattson and his team. And he went through each department and determined um, a, a fully burdened hourly cost. And that includes labor costs, it includes overhead costs. Um, any consultants that we might utilize um, for, for conducting inspections was included. Um, ultimately, it looks at what does the department, for instance, for building? How, what does building incur in providing one hour of service? And that hourly rate, that fully burdened rate was determined. The second part of the process was sitting down and having conversations with the staff in those two departments. Really sitting down and understanding the process that it takes to issue these permits. Um, I'll, I'll use the, since it's on the screen, I'll use this residential HVAC changeout. It's very easy to think that there isn't a whole lot that goes into that. But a contractor has to come into city hall, they apply for the permit. A staff member has to meet them at the counter and go through the plan, um, look at where it's going to be placed. Does the substrate have to be replaced or can it go back to where it was? Um, then, then, you know, they're given the green light to go out and do the replacement and an inspector has to be called out. The inspector incurs drive time and these inspectors are usually third-party contractors that we hire. Um, they incur drive time, they incur inspection time. And then they have to come back and they have to provide a report. There's some administrative time that goes into that. At the end of the day, we sign off on the paperwork, everything is approved. And then we have the document retention piece of that. Because we do have to maintain all of those records internally. Right now, outside of our land management system, which isn't live yet, it's a little bit more of a laborious process from a, a, the document retention piece. All of that added together, um, Mr. Mattson and his team understood the process and they come up with an estimated amount of time it took in order to perform the services for this fee type. I believe this particular one was forty-five minutes total. Um, then, in order to determine the fee, uh, he takes the, the fully burdened rate times that forty-five minutes and comes up with the total cost that the city incurs in order to provide a, a permit for this changeout. And then that's where the analysis really came in, talking with the departments, understanding how many of these we have each year to determine the level of cost recovery that the city would like to achieve. Um, it, it wasn't as subjective as it sounds because we really asked um, ClearSource to focus on keeping us in line with our neighboring cities and with other beach cities. Um, that's where you see in the agenda, the uh, attachment to the packet. That's what you see in appendix A, um, and to some degree appendix B. There's a full detail for every single fee of the number of hours that it takes to provide it, the fully burdened rate, and then our goal for cost recovery. But this wasn't just doing some analysis and throwing some numbers on paper. This report is the product of over a year of analysis and work between the city departments and ClearSource Financial. It was a very thoughtful process and Mr. Mattson and his team do this all day long with other government agencies. They're experts in this area. So they were able to provide us with a lot of assistance, um, such as this residential HVAC that you see on the screen. A lot of assistance in determining what an appropriate cost recovery level is for Seal Beach. And that's what you see in this agenda packet tonight. We've tried to put together a very thoughtful and reasonable um, set of proposed fees for our city that achieves a, a, a good level of cost recovery, but it's still not full cost recovery.
Great, thank you. Now, so what this tells me is that we know what our real costs are and we can defend them in terms of, this is what it costs the city. And therefore, anything that we do that's less than a hundred percent cost recovery is, we're subsidizing uh, those folks that are receiving that service. So the question for me becomes, the philosophical question is how, how far can we go to achieve a reasonable rate of cost recovery? And how quickly do we need to reach a level to where we're not gonna be falling behind if we don't raise the fees enough this year or each year or however many years we would intend to, you know, um, put this into effect. So I'm not presenting a solution. I'm just trying to distill, I think, what our decision points need to be. So, any other comments? Before we call for the vote? Okay, then, uh, I'll call for a motion in a second.
A motion of what? We're a study session.
Well.
Mayor, if, mayor, if I could, we're actually looking for um, direction from council to um, to staff to bring back this item at a public hearing to formally consider uh, the proposed adjustments to our fee study, fee schedule.
Okay, so are we doing that by, by a vote then or consensus? How would you suggest we proceed?
I think that, I think that direction is best given by.
I'm sorry, you broke, you broke up, Craig.
I think it would be best to have that direction uh, to schedule a public hearing by a motion and a vote.
Okay, then I will now call for a motion in a second to do that.
To do that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Calmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council member Sis Darsic, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council member Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Council member Masalavid, how do you vote?
Yes.
It passes five oh, thank you. And now, uh, after a long evening, it's time for adjournment. And I will now adjourn the city council on Monday, November the eighth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and hang it in there tonight.
Good night.
Good night.